Twelfth Regular Business Meeting of City Council. Mr. Hamp, lead us in Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll remind those in attendance, if you wish to speak tonight, their sign-up sheets in the back of the room. The first item of business is consideration of the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson, is our second.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie's five oh. Item three is matters from council members. Do any members have anything they wish to present?
Got a few honors, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to share that attended the Twenty-Ninth Annual African-American Book Read-In at Winona Elementary yesterday, and our son Josh was a reader, and what a wonderful program. Former coach Mike London from UVA was there in attendance, and it was really a great event for our community. Also attended the Rosenwald Documentary last night at the Wayne Theater, and it was jam-packed, just loaded with people. Such a great story of an amazing human and all that he did for the African-American community and so many other subsets of our society across the country. The mayor and I attended a business networking meeting at the Wainsboro Country Club, which was well-attended and enjoyed that opportunity. Also, I presented at the Wainsboro Noon Rotary, providing sort of an update on the city, a state of the city, and appreciated that opportunity with the Noon Rotary. And then lastly, we just talked about the consent, on the consent agenda, the fund balance allocation. Just wanted to share that I've had some conversations with the mayor and some members of council about kind of how we move forward with fund balance into, as we approach into the upcoming budget season, and have that sort of consensus that we're gonna have that conversation as part of the upcoming budget season, and what choices might lie ahead for us and the community. So, that's all I have to share, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Anybody else? Item four is to receive a presentation from Mr. Miles Bobbitt, Executive Director Valley Alcohol Safety Action Program regarding the agency's annual report.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. Thank you. My name is Miles Bobbitt. I represent Valley ASAP. You should have a copy of our annual report. I won't go over it. I will take questions if you have any. Valley ASAP has been in existence for forty years now. We've offered services to this community, Augusta County, and the city of Stanton for most of that. Now, we also offer services to Lexington, Buena Vista, and Rockbridge County. During that time, all the services that have been offered for people that have a DUI or drug offense, or some other alcohol offense in the community that are referred to us by the court, all this has been offered and provided with no taxpayer funding. That's something that the ASAP system, twenty-four local ASAPs across the state are all proud of. We all serve our courts and our jurisdictions, and we do it with the funds that come from the people that come through our program. Each person that does come through the program is screened individually and referred out for services, with the whole goal of treatment or education in the end being highway safety. These programs were originated to address highway safety and to improve what was at the time epidemic of drunk driving, and now we see more of a distracted driving. DUI arrests across the state are down about twenty percent, which is a good thing, but we're seeing a lot more accidents due to cell phones and distracted driving and texting. So, we're looking at developing new programs to address that need, such as our driver improvement program is expanding. We're offering now something called aggressive driving program, which has, instead of the eight hours of classroom training on driving, it has an additional four hours of anger management attached. We're looking at programs in distracted driving, as I've said, which, you know, they're available nationally, and hopefully we'll be able to move into that. Wainsboro's biggest referral base, and I was just looking at it, is, believe it or not, well, DUIs. We had thirty-six DUIs last year from Wainsboro, but the next category was community service. The courts refer community service to us, and a lot of people come through our agency, and we monitor the community service and make sure that they're doing what the court wants in giving back. Food banks would be a place, churches they would do it at, the Valley Mission in Stanton, your Wildlife Center out here is a place that we use, so all those types of places benefit from that. I wanted to go over those numbers a little bit, and then I'll take questions, because I know you have a bunch of people tonight that are waiting for me to get out of here. So, are there any questions on the annual report? I noticed if you look at page six, page four of six, you'll see that it looks like Wainsboro's referrals are pretty much in line with Stanton, which is similar in population. Do not be intimidated by Rockbridge County. The judge there likes to use something that we have for speeding with the interstate there in the hills. He gets, we get a lot of speeding tickets there. People who wish to have that dismissed may do a traffic probation program for six months and complete a driver improvement program. They can do that online or in person and submit that to the court, and the judge will either dismiss that charge or reduce it to another infraction. Like, you can see that that kind of pushes their numbers to make everybody else just look a little, little off. But as far Stanton and Wainsboro are concerned, they're pretty close. Buena Vista has a slightly smaller population base than Wainsboro and Stanton, and you can see there, that's reflected in their numbers also. Is that, any questions from anybody?
So, if somebody gets a ticket for driving while they have a cellphone, is that an option? They can come take your driver improvement class as opposed?
If there's an accident or something involved, or if there's something else, the judge can refer them for the driver improvement program. There's any aggressive behavior, then they could take the extra four hours of aggressive, aggressive driving, is what it's called.
Anybody else got a question? Thank you, Mr. Bobbitt.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You, too.
Item four B is to receive a presentation from representatives of the soccer organization of the Charlottesville area, and Dwayne Jones, Parks and Rec Director, regarding the proposed public-private partnership project for Basic City Park. Mr. Hamp, or?
Yes, sir, Mayor. If I could give a brief introduction, then we'll get to the substance of the matter. For council's benefit, as a matter of process this evening, Mr. Jones and the representatives of SOCA or SACCA will present the substance of the proposition, the substance of the proposal, and if council is comfortable with the content of the proposal and the draft of the memorandum of understanding, I would simply ask at the end of the presentation tonight that you direct staff to schedule a public hearing for consideration of the MOU, because what is contemplated constitutes a property interest, would be necessary for the council to have a public hearing on the matter before we would execute an MOU with SACCA. So, that's a matter of process. Council's not asked to make any decisions this night, other than if you're ready to proceed and ask the staff to schedule a public hearing. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Jones.
Mayor, members of council, thanks for having me here this evening. I also have with me Matt Wilson, who's Executive Director of SOCA, and also have several members of the board who are also in attendance this evening. Been working with SOCA and prior to that Augusta FC for quite a number of years on the redevelopment of Basic Park into a, what we like to call a regional soccer complex. This is an existing photo of what Basic Park looks like today, and I'll key you in on the large shelter. That's what you can sort of pick up in the next set of plans. That remains intact, and as you move forward, that sort of large area, I think I have a pointer, oh, there, right there. So, this is a master plan that was actually funded by Augusta FC at the time to, again, look at field space for Wainsboro. Soccer in our area is one of the fastest-growing sports. It's one of the most heavily-attended youth sports. We currently have three full-size soccer fields at Ridgeview Park, and that's all we're able to provide. Most of the other city and the younger players play out at Eastside Speedway, because we just don't have enough space. So, they had approached us several years ago regarding, you know, how do we bring more folks in? How do we start regional tournaments? How do we get more involved? And it sort of evolved over time as Augusta FC was under, now is under the umbrella of SOCA of Charlottesville, and the plan is, has continued to be discussed at a variety of levels. Taking a little bit closer look at the plan, probably the key element for this is the two main fields as you enter into Basic Park. It is now a wooded area, but these would be artificial turf fields, and that's important for a variety of reasons. One is the amount of use that those fields can take versus your typical grass fields. You simply cannot, and we've seen this at Ridgeview, and they see it in other areas that they work with, the grass just gets continually beat down by the amount of play that they receive. These would be artificial turf fields. They do require a different level of maintenance, but they do not wear out nearly as fast as grass fields. Those two fields would also be lit so that virtually could be played on all the way up until the evening hours. Again, just focusing on this area here, this would remain. Some other elements here would be a concession and restroom facility. We do have some rearrangement of parking and doing some different things with the parking because of the hope that this would host regional tournaments and allow for more folks to access the park. Another key element is these three irrigated grass fields, sort of in the lower section of Basic Park. If you go there now, it's basically open fields. A lot of folks, we, you know, go to the river and throw frisbee for the dogs and different things, but it's very open and passive now. There's not very many trees down there. The other thing I want to point out is this is, whoops, this is also a trailhead for the greenway. That all remains intact, and one of the plans that we'd come up with is a sort of secondary entrance that puts you a little bit closer to, so, the kayak launch area, and also the ability to use the greenway. So, we really think it really ties in with some of the things that we're looking to do as a park system, tying it with the greenway, but also matching some of the more active areas that SACCA would bring. So, I'll turn it over to Matt, talk a little bit about SOCA.
Thank you for considering our proposal. I'm gonna make sure everyone understands a little bit about who SACCA is. SOCA, SACCA, either way. We are a nonprofit organization. We were founded in nineteen eighty-two in Charlottesville originally. They didn't have a soccer program at the time, and some parents came together to create a program for the children that were there. It grew fairly quickly over the years, and in the early nineties, the board decided to hire staff to help run the program. We merged with Augusta FC out of Wainsboro, Augusta and Stanton, in two thousand fourteen. So, currently, in the Augusta region, we have an office here in Wainsboro, as well as an office over in Albemarle County. There's about eleven hundred players that are playing just here locally, on ninety teams, about a hundred and fifty volunteer coaches, just sort of give you a weekend snapshot. You know, there's some sixty games going on each weekend, and we're using about twenty fields locally, not just in Wainsboro, but also in Augusta County and in Stanton. I think right now is about eight percent of the children between the ages of five and eighteen are currently playing with SOCA. Over in Charlottesville, just so you get an idea, that's about twenty percent, so it's like one in five, so there is room for growth. I think the statewide average is about ten percent for youth soccer right now. So, it's growing here and getting bigger, and something that I think will continue to grow. We also just should note that we do a lot of financial assistance. Last year, in two thousand seventeen, we gave out about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of free soccer. So, that's about five percent of our annual budget that we dedicate for children to be able to play that wouldn't otherwise be able to afford to do so. There was actually an interesting article today in the Richmond Times-Dispatch talking about sports tourism in the Richmond area, and RICO, Chesterfield Counties have really gotten big into sports tourism. It's fairly recession-proof, and they've built a lot of fairly large field complexes, not just for soccer, but field hockey and lacrosse, that type of thing. And it's, it's been a boon for them. So, just looking at what we would be doing here at Basic Park, if this were to be built out, we'd have five fields. I estimate you could have approximately six teams at a tournament per field, so that's thirty teams coming in for the weekend from outside of Wainsboro. Fifteen players, times two days, you know, getting to hotels, about two hundred and fifty dollars average spend. So, each tournament that we run is nearly two hundred thousand dollars of outside money coming into Wainsboro. We currently host three tournaments. We have one on Memorial Day weekend, one on Labor Day weekend, and then one the weekend prior to Thanksgiving. So, that's what we're currently operating, and this site would be the primary hub for that, for that type of activity. We'd also, of course, be using it. It would be our, our main center of operations for the organization in this community, so we would host our sort of regular travel games. We play clubs from Blacksburg and Roanoke and Lynchburg, those types of places. They would come to visit when we hosted them throughout the fall and the spring, so there's additional spending that would, that would come in throughout the year on a consistent basis to the community. You'll see in the MOU that if we're able to come to an agreement, we would commence fundraising to put a lot of money into the facility, to develop it the way we feel it should be, to truly be a gem for, for youth soccer. Each turf field's about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so we're planning on two of those, and then some nice grass irrigated fields that would be of a really high level. Those are about three hundred and seventy-five, and then we're proposing to split the cost of the lights, so a little under three million dollars is what we would end up putting into the facility to build it out. We have a facility in Albemarle County, similar size to this. It doesn't have lights or turf, but I can tell you, when we opened that in the early two thousands, it made a world of difference, just the pride the kids and the families took in the organization and, you know, playing in the game and being proud of things, and we saw an uptick in participation that came from that out. Expect the same thing here when this is built out. I think it would really be something that we could be proud of in the community. So, we're excited about it and prepared to get started. We know that this community really could use a nice, you know, field complex here. It's something when you go to places like Lynchburg or Blacksburg or Charlottesville, they have them. So, this would put us on par with what I would consider to be peer communities, and I think would be a real asset, certainly for SACCA and for Wainsboro.
So, looking at it, again, we developed this and been working with SACCA over the last several years. We approached it sort of as a phased approach, because obviously it's difficult to raise all the money at once. It's also, we're fully aware of the financial constraints that are, that are on the city and all the variety of products we have. Phase one, and the breakdown there is concessions and restroom facility. Basic does not have a working restroom facility and has not had in my twenty-three years with the city. This would solve that. It would be a combination restroom building and concession area. And also, we would need to upgrade some water and sewer, electrical and plumbing. Also, there were some removal of asphalt and asphalt, and that first sort of phase to get off the ground was about a hundred and fifty-six, a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Phase two would be overlaying part of this parking lot. We would use the existing parking lot that is left, but it, again, is not large enough, so we'd have a new parking lot and overlay the existing. That's another a hundred and thirty-two thousand in sort of the phase two. And then phase three is this new lot, it's sort of off the screen, but sort of goes this way here, of a new eighty-four space lot, and that we would envision as, as the three grass fields come online and you would need additional parking, that would be the third and final phase, and somewhere around sixty-nine thousand. We've also added some architectural and engineering and some contingency fees. We did base these off the plans that we have, so that we did some material takeoffs, worked with Public Works on water and sewer lines, and worked with a couple different contractors on some building prices. So, they are, while they are not concrete, they are better than a back-of-napkin guess. So, the total phase one, two, and three is around three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. You add in half of the turf field lining, and around two hundred and two thousand dollars, and so you're looking at about five hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the city's commitment over a period of three phases, and again, matching that with two-point-eight million from SOCA. And again, I think it really does produce a phenomenal facility that not only is good for Wainsboro, but also good for sports tourism and attracting folks to come here for weekend tournaments. So, that's all I have. I will certainly answer any questions, and I know that folks from SOCA are here as well and can, happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I would like to know, this is mainly a weekend complex?
Actually, I think it, I think it would be an active every day of the week. We can't, we can't give them a bus field space and enough time for the amount of teams that need to play. I true, I do, definitely for a weekend and tournaments and larger-type things, it would be a weekend, and that's, you know, that's indicative of what takes place in other areas. But I would imagine that these fields, especially the artificial turf fields, would be in use almost every single night during the spring and fall.
What other features will be in the park besides, for soccer players? For non-soccer players, what features will be available?
Well, there's a couple different things that, that this master plan tried to cover a lot of different things. It's a little hard to see in here, but there was what we determined that could be a potential playground here, walking trails, obviously the connection to the river. This is the rendition of what the greenway would look like, so we envision a circular path that folks and parents could walk and, and go to the river and experience things like that. So, that all is not included in pricing, just because we were trying to sort of bring it into the basics, but I do think there's room for that as the park grows and expands, that we can offer some of those types of things. But truly, the connection from the greenway and the river, I think, is a huge asset and a huge benefit, that folks will be able to experience at Basic, and, and it is also close to downtown, businesses, food, places to pick up lunches and things like that. We think that's another added benefit to its location.
Do we have anything going on down there now?
We do have the kayak takeout area for the kayak water trail. We do currently, YBS, I mean, youth football does practices down there during the week. We've spoken with them. We think that that's something we can phase and find additional space as this fills in, and, and currently, the two turf fields are in a wooded area, so there's still room for that football and soccer can coexist for the short term, and we can work together. And SOCA has agreed to figure out helping with field space and then potentially sharing some of the turf space.
Anything else?
Yeah, actually, I spoke to the, the new, new president of the quarterback club over the weekend and relayed, relayed that and knowing our early conversations about this, and so, I know we certainly want to make sure that we accommodate all of those different sports that, that we value in our community and want to make sure that they're successful. And so theoretically, once the, you know, once the greenway, and we realize how long some things can take, but over time, theoretically, someone could actually visit here and go all the way downtown and never have to cross the street.
That's correct.
All on the greenway, which is pretty amazing.
Anything else? You done?
Yeah, I think I am. I would just, I would just add, too, so, you know, I try to give little previews to try to let people know stuff on, on Facebook, and for whatever it's worth, I know, you know, I've only got like four hundred people or so that follow me, but wow. I mean, I shared this story, and in seventy-two, seventy-three and a half hours, over eight thousand views, a hundred and thirty shares. I mean, it's insane how, I think, I think it speaks to the quality of, of the organization, your reputation, and, and the quality of the work that staff's put into kind of assembling this, so I know, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Do we need to have any more discussion, or where are we at? Are we looking forward for the staff to go forward with it?
If council is comfortable with the content of the project proposal, then I would ask that you direct us to shape up the MOU and schedule a public hearing, either for the February twenty-sixth meeting or the first meeting in March.
Everybody okay with it?
Okay. Thank you.
Got a green light. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming.
Item four C is to receive a presentation from Sue Wright, Director of Instructions for the Wainsboro Public Schools, regarding the profile of a graduate and changes to the SOAs. Good afternoon, Ms. Wright.
Mayor Allen and City Council members, thank you so much for allowing me to speak to you about the profile of a Virginia graduate. This is a response by the Commonwealth of Virginia to the changing world that we live in, and so for the changing educational world as well. So, you know that we've always looked at our content knowledge. That's what our standards of learning have been based on, and that's what we've been tested on, and our schools have been judged on, and that will stay here, the content knowledge. We still expect our students to know the standards of learning. But now the Commonwealth will begin looking at how we are doing in teaching our students workplace skills, community and civic responsibility, and career planning, and we will be judged on that as well, and we are looking forward to that, because we feel like that's what our communities are asking for. The impact on students. Our graduates will have high academic standards. They will also have workplace skills, civic responsibility, and they will walk out of our doors with a career plan based on their interest and their experiences. They will be, we will be judged on, and our graduates will be judged on, the attributes and skills in critical thinking, creative thinking, communication, collaboration, and citizenship, and we call these the five Cs. And our employers are saying, this is what they want. Impact on schools. We have been judged on that content knowledge, so when our students sit down and they take the standards of learning test that one day, seventy-five percent of our students need to pass in English and seventy percent in the other core areas, regardless of how they came in. So, now we're gonna be judged on progress as well as content knowledge. So, now, we're going to be judged on progress as well as content knowledge. And this is really going to help Waynesboro students because we are making a lot of progress. Also, our English language learners will be judged on, our schools will be judged on how well they reach reading proficiency, our English proficiency. We'll also be judged on the success in narrowing achievement gaps. So, all of our subgroups need to do well on the measures that the state puts in. We're going to be evaluated on our success rate in reducing absenteeism and lowering dropout rates. We're very excited about this. We're already well on the way. And our high schools will be judged on participation and achievement in advanced programs, career and technical education, which we know as CTE, and work-based and service-based learning. The Commonwealth is requiring us to increase the amount of mentorships that we provide for our students so they will graduate with work experience. The impact on our city. Our schools are already demonstrating the growth that will be recognized by this new model of accreditation. And the accreditation measures will be accredited, accredited with conditions, and accredited denied. And accredited denied will be measured on whether we're following along with the plan and doing what the Commonwealth has asked us to do. And we're not going to be accredited denied because we're doing all of that. So, we're working on that accredited mark. Also, I'm happy to say that Waynesboro City's comprehensive plan aligns directly with the profile of a Virginia graduate. Our community has shown us time and time again that they're willing to partner with their schools to provide mentorships and other opportunities for our students to gain experiences in the five Cs: critical thinking, creative thinking, communication, collaboration, and citizenship. High-performing schools support a successful city. Waynesboro will benefit from the recognition of growth and the new standards of accreditation. So, ladies and gentlemen, the profile of a Virginia graduate will also be the profile of a Waynesboro graduate. Folks will look at our Waynesboro students and know that they have content knowledge, workplace skills, community and civic responsibility, and career planning. Any questions?
In order to implement some of the aspects of this will require additional teachers or teachers with different skills or...
Yes, sir. We may need teachers with different certification. We will certainly need teachers who can partner with our community to provide for the mentorships. And we need, a lot of the direction is going with that career and technical education. Students are demanding that we respond to their interest in coding and in cybersecurity. And so, we are looking for teachers with those kinds of certifications as well as language arts and basic skills in mathematics.
So, with this comes the need for more resources, teachers, money. What else? Would it require more, it would require a lot more as far as a budget?
Hear about that? It's going to require a different type of teacher.
Okay.
A teacher possibly with workforce experience, with technology experience. And always, we can attract teachers with a good pay scale. And so, it will require that to maintain the teaching staff that we have. And then, as we look towards our buildings, we may need to do something different with equipment and resources. I believe that this city will partner with us in terms of business settings for our students and in terms of mentorships. But there's some things that may not, we may not be leaning so much on in terms of some of the CTE jobs because they're all changing. And we're well ahead of the game in terms of technology. We're almost one-to-one, fifth grade up through 12th grade, one computer to one student. And so, we're trying to make sure that we're continuing that so that they have the technology skills that they need.
Any other questions?
Well, just to piggyback on, and I don't want to make it all about money, right? Because, I mean, these are great objectives and great initiatives and, you know, with our daughter, you know, going through Kate Collins, you know, the civics courses there are great, the teachers are great, the faculty are great. Great experience in the high school with, I think, already talking about kind of career development. And so, I know that sort of already exists, but I just want to call it as what it is. So, the state hasn't offered additional resources, financial resources to facilitate this. I just want to go on.
Correct.
Okay, so, just on record, just anybody in the audience, if they're wondering if the state's participating in it. So, I think this is great. I'm really interested in, as you probably know, about how that interaction works with some of our business leaders in the community and how we can, there's always constant improvement at any organization, and how we can more aptly understand their needs in terms of recruitment and employee development and skill set development. And if there is ever an opportunity where if you all are going out and talking to folks, and I would love to shadow, I'll be as quiet as I can in the corner, but I would love to sort of experience that. And I think our organization, I think, or my colleagues and I, would all benefit from understanding how that processes and particularly in our business community. I mean, we are very serious about improving the business climate in Waynesboro and for us to thrive. And so, in order to do that, I think it's helpful to understand at the most granular level how as collective leadership in the city, how we can be of assistance and be informed about the needs of our community, particularly in our business community. So, if there's ever, if you ever get bored and you need like an extra seat to fill, I'd love to participate.
Certainly call on you. We would like our business community to look to Waynesboro for their workforce as well as for their great graduates to go to college. That's what we hope.
We've got a great workforce and we're going to make it even better.
That's right.
Together, right?
Absolutely. I believed him, all except for the part where he said he'd be quiet. Probably not.
You're going to have to come to to take care of that.
Thank you. No other questions?
Some of the technology you mentioned in our goals, will that be discussed and added to what's needed in our renovations?
Yes, sir. In fact, Mr. Tici has visited several schools as well as you've joined us to look at what the new school looks like for the needs of students. And he's looking at different hours and different setups, flexible furniture, and of course, infrastructure that will support the web and different types of research. So, it's good timing here in Waynesboro for all of these things to come together.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Wright.
Thank you so much.
Item 5A is to consider adopting a reimbursement resolution for the Waynesboro High School renovation project. Mr. Hamp?
Mayor Allen and members of council, so continuing the theme of investment in our school system and our young people, the council has asked to adopt a reimbursement resolution related to the Waynesboro High School project. You may recall the council adopted a similar resolution in January of 2017. What this enables the municipality to do is to pay itself back for qualifying expenses related to the project once permanent financing or debt is issued for the project. And so, as we continue to incur expenses around engineering, design, the acquisition of property, demolition of property, any related expense and eligible expense, the city may reimburse itself for those costs once the permanent financing is established.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Hamp? Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Opposed, carries 5O. Item 5B is to consider adopting a resolution of support for an application by River City Collective LLC for an industrial revitalization fund loan in the amount of $600,000 to be applied to redevelopment of 304 West Main Street, formerly the Leggitts Department Store Building. Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the Industrial Revitalization Fund, IRF Fund, is a state program developed to leverage local and private resources to achieve a market-driven redevelopment of vacant and deteriorated industrial and commercial properties. The program is targeted toward blighted non-residential properties whose condition creates physical and economic blight to the surrounding area. And the eligible properties can be former manufacturing facilities, mining facilities, warehouses, or large-scale white elephant structures like vacant department stores, theaters, and the like. Structures whose original intended use was solely residential are not eligible. The DHCD provides up to $600,000 in either grants if the property is owned by the local government or loan subsidies if the property is in private hands. But in either case, the local government must be the applicant for the IRF grant. We do have some success here in Waynesboro, experience with the IRF grant. The former Virginia Metal Crafters building was renovated for Basic City Breweries utilizing an IRF subsidized, loan subsidy, rather. The owner of the former Leggitts Department Store located at 304 and 320 West Main Street is interested in pursuing an IRF grant. River City Collective has engaged professional design and construction team to develop a plan to repair and renovate the structure into a mixed commercial building and has asked that the city sponsor their application to the program. Any of the match would be the sole requirement of River City Collective without a financial obligation of the city. So, with that, I'm glad to answer any questions that you might have. And otherwise, we're looking for a resolution of support for the application from council this evening.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Shaw? If not, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries 5O.
Now, we keep our fingers crossed.
Amen to that. Item six is to consider approving a request by the Wayne Theater Alliance to authorize the sale and consumption of alcohol in Constitution Park in association with the South River Music Festival on Saturday, June 9, 2018. Mr. Hamp?
Mayor Allen, I think the agenda description says it all. So, unless there were questions from council, we're simply asking authorization for that organization to sell and for the consumption of alcohol as part of their event.
And they did this last year also, didn't they?
Yes, sir, they did.
No problems from it last year?
Not that I'm aware of.
Chief Olver is shaking his head negative, so good. All right, any other questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the request?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Marx. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Short. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries 5O. Item seven is to consider an ordinance relocating the office of the voter register from 250 South Wayne Avenue to 503 West Main Street. Mr. Hamp?
Mayor Allen and members of council, it is my recommendation to relocate the offices of the general registrar from 250 South Wayne Avenue to 503 West Main Street, locations generally referred to as the Gorsuch Building and Yancey Building respectively. The proposed relocation is to provide needed additional space for the building and zoning office presently co-located with the building official and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. In each instance, the offices have staff sharing offices or will have staff sharing offices in the immediate future. The Code of Virginia establishes limits and obligations with respect to the relocation of the general registrar's office, and relocation must be accomplished by ordinance and relocation should not be effected sooner than 60 days before a general election. The registrar's function and service is appreciated and valued. I recognize that my proposal presents grounds for objection as matters of practical consideration and preference, but I want to be clear that we should all regard and value the performance of the registrar, the board of elections, and the numerous employees that work to make sure that our elections in Waynesboro are conducted without glitch and perhaps more importantly, concluded in a manner in which participants and observers can have every confidence of the validity of the outcomes of those elections. Nevertheless, I think that intelligent and reasonable people can have differing opinions about the space necessary for the pursuit of the registrar's function and those of the functions associated with zoning and building and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. We have existed in the current space arrangement for some time, but recently, changes in the community and in fact, changes in organizational focus have prompted the need to, in my view, furnish additional space for zoning function and the building official's office and the Commonwealth Attorney's Office. We, this evening, the council has asked to introduce the ordinance affecting the relocation upon my request and I think acknowledging that the registrar, the board of elections, and a number of the employees associated with the election function have communicated to me and to you concerns that they have regarding my recommendation. If you have questions, I'd be delighted to respond to them.
The one thing I'd like to say, and tonight it's being introduced, asked to be introduced, but it's not a done deal. It's not going to be rubber stamped. It's not going to be something that we don't take in all seriousness and with due diligence to look at all the options. In a perfect world, we would have a room where everything could be according to the conversation we had today and how things should be handled. But in no way is it my intentions, and I hope I speak for everybody sitting up here, to do anything that would make your job harder. And I think y'all do an outstanding job and everybody that works and volunteers does an outstanding job, and we want to continue that. Having said that, we are in a spot for space and where we're going to have to go and what we're going to have to do. I think we have a meeting planned for tomorrow.
I believe that, yes, we're confirmed for that.
That we're going to have some good discussion. Also, me personally, I told Lisa today, I'd like to go out, view other jurisdictions and see what kind of setups they have, look at all the requirements that we have to do. There's no way that we have any intentions of not upholding our end of it to make sure that things are done in the proper way. It just happens to be sometimes when a new road comes through, as Mr. Short very well knows for VDOT, there's some interruptions, but it's all in the name of progress and making sure that the job is done the best that it can be. I don't have any questions of you other than my intentions are not to get it introduced tonight, have it brought up at our next meeting, and to be voted on and passed. That's not my intentions whatsoever. So, I want everybody sitting here tonight to understand that. There's going to be more conversations, more looks, looking into what's available throughout our city, through our other offices, through our other buildings, and try to work all together to try to come up with the correct decision that needs to be made. So, if with that, y'all got comments or questions?
I think that's an excellent idea.
I totally, totally support it.
I mean, but I want everybody to understand, this is just a process we're going through. But... But it's not going to be, we won't talk about it or looking until our next meeting. And so, we look forward to seeing everybody tomorrow that we need to meet with, okay? All right. Then is there anybody that will make a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. Number eight, communications, correspondence, and calendar.
I don't have anything this evening, sir.
Thank you. Number nine, a citizen's comment period.
Yes, sir, Mr. Robert Horowitz.
If you'll give us your name and your address, please, sir?
Yes, my name is Robert Horowitz. I live at 1216 Frederick Street in the wonderful city of Wayne'sboro. We recently moved here two years ago, and I had the great honor of being requested to join and am one of the electoral board members here in Wayne'sboro. And I want to thank you for your open statement to listen to us and work with us. One thing I do want to say, and I want to be very specific about this. There are priorities that are required through the state to work with the electoral board and the registrar. And I have to express that the electoral board members were a bit dismayed in how we were approached. We have one of the top three registrars in the state, Lisa Jeffers. And we have, what I can safely say, because I'm at each board, I tell them at each ward, each ward is the best ward we have, we have the best volunteers going, and we are very good. Virginia has the best system of integrity in elections in the United States of America, the best. We don't want to have anything to do with anything that can confer an idea that we are not being integral and as the state calls it, pure in our election process. I was glad to hear that our citizenship will be a new or at least an expanded upon approach that's going to be required by the state for our young people because we need them. They are the future voters. But I want to make it perfectly clear that we want to work with you, we understand. Everybody has problems with issues of space and time. But we have to make sure that the integrity of our voting system is not affected in any way. We want to thank you and look forward to working with you all.
Thank you, sir. Anybody? All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Then we are adjourned. Thank you.